Good, you guys.
Good, Jim. So how's it feel to be the top wrestler in the country?
I wouldn't be able to tell you. It's been a while. Yeah, that's my brother, I guess.
Oh, I thought it was you.
He'll take you out in the hallway and you'll be laughing.
It's gotta be easier than what my wife will do.
Yeah, they'll both tell you that they're most afraid of our daughter by far.
I actually think it's you.
Me?
I think it's you.
Heck, you guys can take over whenever you're ready. Let's give this a quick rundown of your proposal and the last question.
Yeah, so.
Pretty similar to last time.
When we last, when we last met, we were just doing a single-story building, taking a concept out of Alexandria, Minnesota that's been really doing well in a small town there. Got connected through one of our good friends and partners in some other business. You know, his daughter had created the concept. And I think the biggest change that has been made since then is obviously the addition of a multiple-story building with apartments or condos bought. So not sure what we want to do there yet. If apartment or condos are a mix, or if that's even an option. But to utilize the zoning to go up as many stories as we can to provide additional living spaces, so.
That's unfolding out of the fact that the last time it seemed like that was more the desire for the town. All of everyone's input had been that you would like to see more housing in the city of Lowell. And we took that concept back to the table with our partners and felt that that was an idea, a way of combining the needs that everyone's looking for.
All right, ready for some questions? There's gonna be a lot of questions, so, so, so you know. The city's vision for Lion's Shit is reconstruction and will be a catalyst project on the west side of the Flat River, and thus revitalizing the area. In essence, the city is looking for a unique and dramatic interest for this lion's share. Why do you believe your firm can provide this? And what would your firm do to make this happen?
What's good to that, or you want to do it? I think one of the unique things that I see that our business proposal brings to the table is this gathering place that's both a morning gathering place and an evening gathering place for our town and the bottom of housing that has been so desired for additional housing need in Lowell. And what I mean by gathering places, this is a town that 17 years ago my husband brought us to. And to be honest with you, I was like, where are you taking me? You know, you pull into town and there's these massive silos out there. And I'm like, what are we doing? You know, we're coming from East Lansing, Haslett area that doesn't really have a town. And over the years, this town has become more of a home than I ever could have hoped for for my family. And in 17 years, I feel like I was born and raised here myself. And that says a lot when you're up against people that have been here five, six generations. And it's very unusual almost in this town to only be here for 17 years. But what I've seen over the years is a town that gathers, that likes to gather. You know, everyone has their differences, but then they come back together. And when you're in need of a neighbor or friend, I mean, you can go to local places and everyone kind of knows each other. Almost like cheers for those of you old enough to know. You know, or everyone knows your name. And for good or bad, or all the drama that that can sometimes bring to the table, especially when related to coaches in the town, that's really a good overall thing. Because we pull each other through a lot. And I see the concept of the Edge being that type of place where you can go and have your morning coffee and someone says hello, good morning, and you can air out your problems. And we can all go there. It's not just a women's boutique where you get women's clothing that's only a draw for women. It's also a coffee shop. It's not just a men's boutique, or not that that would even be a draw for the men in my family, but a place for all groups, of all ages. And that's what I think the unique concept of it all is. And the last time we were in front of all of you listening to the city council meeting, I even thought you had a woman come forward that had the problem of trying to figure out a place where she could rent out her canoes. And we would be open to even discussing that. I don't know if that's possible in this space, but she's looking for some waterfront place. So that's what I see this as, like willing to open up and talk about all ideas of what we can bring to the downtown. And as we've traveled around with the boys competing, that's what I've seen in these other up-and-coming places, gathering places, coffee shops, that roll into also having a drink at night. So not just morning shops, after-dinner drinks where people come together. So that's what I see this place as bringing to this town and people all enjoying it.
All right, thank you. What are your cost estimates to fully convert the building? Have you completed a preliminary pro forma? Have you completed a project of this nature? And what percentage of the product are you anticipating financing?
Yeah, so I, you know, we're estimating about, you know, $2 million, $2 million. And I think we're really leaning heavily to, you know, probably take down the existing structure and put a new existing structure up to expand square footage footprint. And, and yes, you know, with, with the certain number of apartments up top along with the retail space at the bottom, you know, we put a preliminary pro forma together, you know. And we initially, we bought the building, you know, from the city in cash, but then financed probably anywhere between 80 and 75% on commercial loan with the bankers that we've, that we use, that we work with in our other lines of business. You got all different backgrounds in partnership group, all different lines of things. You know, obviously, you know, you put, you know, there's Big Ethanol and their ventures into all kinds of different things. You know, there's, you know, there's us that are in multifamily and, you know, pretty heavily in storage. So, you know, we develop projects, execute successful projects just across the board in a bunch of different industries and professions. So, and all local, you know, for the most, for the most part, so.
Will you be seeking any assistance from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation? And if so, what would you be asking? Are you gonna be asking anything from the city of Lowell?
Not at all.
Not at all, or?
Not at all.
Okay.
One of the city's biggest concerns is we sell the property to develop or potential development. However, the development decides not to move forward with the project for maybe five to 10 years, or sells the parcel to another entity who doesn't intend to develop it. While the city recognizes that development projects take time and there are many issues that come along the way, what steps will you take to alleviate the city's concern in purchasing the property and not moving forward with the development?
We have no intention of not moving forward as quickly as possible. I don't, I mean, obviously.
Well, I think it's personal to, you know, like to us, you know, we're, like she said, we grew up here from the town, you know, we've seen the towns, you know, the city developing. You know, we really want to get a part of that, and.
Our team's ready to go. I mean, I think that's as simple as it can be put. So, once we would have the property, it would just go into finalization of the print and approvals and all of that. We've all been involved with small businesses for many, many years. And even though he says that, you know, that he's heavily involved in storage, I mean, he just over a year ago started the storage unit business and he's always operated kind of like the drag story. Goes from zero to 120 in no time. So we've got storage facilities all across the country already. So we're just not, if we don't have the plan to act, we wouldn't be in front of you right now. Now, obviously, I've constructed every home that we've lived in, so I know that you hit roadblocks along the way. But you're talking about months of delays, not years. And we'll be braced for those because everyone involved has constructed things. So they know that you're gonna hit construction delays. But it's not our intent, and I don't know any other way to put it, to sit on the project by any means. If we get delayed by a permit or something, that would be only short-term. Thank you. You're welcome.
The city of Lowell is looking for a tenant with the ability to complete the project and to have a sustainable operation. Please tell us that you will work with the city to ensure that you can adequately fund this project and continue to have sustainable operation.
Everyone's already been pre-approved for what we're going after. We already have bankers in place that are interested in the whole project.
We have developed a team of engineering firms, plants.
Designers.
Yeah.
Like everyone's already teed up, been placed for other projects and this project.
And primary contractors as well.
The existing Edge has been open now how long?
I'd say, just, I think it's been just about a year and a couple months. It was from conception to finish, it was done since last. I think on the sustainability piece part of it is the, you know, having the living space and the, you know, the space for community engagement. But on that piece, really, for the project for us, it's, it's, we're interested in being part of developing Lowell, we're all vested into. And we live here. And even though we're not in the city, the city, the city matters to us. We're here, I mean, we're, this is our town. So, I don't know, that's, we're just interested in working there.
And I think the concept of the Edge that exists in Minnesota needs some tweaking to really service our community, in my opinion. And that's a part of why I got a little bit more involved too. I think it has more of a contemporary flair to it and maybe some things in it that wouldn't service all of what I see our community's needs are. So that's how I think the sustainability comes in a little bit stronger, is understanding what you're going into. We stayed in a similar place in Pennsylvania when we were there for one of Max's events where they had like a gathering pastry, coffee place on the lower level. And then we stayed in an Airbnb that was amongst some other condos on top. And it was definitely the gathering place for that town and all of the same concepts of the Edge. But I felt, felt like it had more servicing needs for our town than like Alexandria, Minnesota. So it won't be the exact plan. I don't think that exact plan would sustain as well here. So we're definitely tuned in to what is going on to the town. I have a sister that lives down here now that feels like she's a townie now and runs around. She's like, wow, you know, we've got a whole community there. And I had to convince her to not move to downtown Grand Rapids. And she's like, I don't know what I was thinking. This is so much better. I'm like, I told you. So, you know, we're listening to her and her people that she's already befriended. And we're just, we're good listeners too. And I'm willing to listen to all of the input. We all are, our whole team is.
How big is Alexandria? I probably should have Googled it, but I didn't.
Depends on if you know, if you're looking at it in the spring and summer as opposed to, you know, you get a lot of people out of Minneapolis that come there. It's a late community.
Oh, okay.
So they, they come there for their summer, the summertime. You know, but I'd say generally, it's, it's a little bit, it's a pretty wide range. But I'd say generally, you're sitting between 10 to 15,000 people.
Okay, okay.
The city of Lowell is focusing on creating a sense of place for the downtown district by enhancing our natural assets and creating a walkable community. What does this mean to you? And how will you embrace this in your project? Have you, in your previous projects, been involved with enhancing this idea in other communities?
Yeah, I mean, for me, I, I own with a couple partners actually a building right on, right on Main Street in downtown Oscego. And we, you know, it was owned by an older gentleman that was, had left the main commercial space pretty vacant. And we came in and brought, leased it out to him and that was bringing in actually her business model leases out to other businesses. And we worked with her and getting a bunch of other local businesses in place. And now it's a huge part of the town. And I get pictures all the time. We let a guy come and put his snow cone stand outside too for the summer. So we get, I get pictures of all these lines and all these people coming through all the time. But to their point, you know, we, this whole concept not only just being out of water, you know, which is a really unique and neat thing for downtown, but also creating the environment, you know, of, you know, driving traffic towards, you know, and bringing that, that whole corridor together over there is what we're really excited about and wanted, you know, wanted to, it's part of our big company. One of the things that we feel like we want to execute this plan is to, to extend that walk, you know, people walk across the bridge, go to Ripley, come over for, you know, maybe for a drink or a coffee or a pastry over at, you know, the Edge. But connecting that whole corridor and adding to that contribution of walking space.
You've kind of already done the hard stuff for us. Because you've got all the trails. I mean, my sister's got her little loop that she's doing all the time and all the same people that she sees. So you've already done the hard part. The trails are there. We just have to create the desire of, hey, I need to go down to the Edge. I want to have a drink with someone. I want to have a coffee. Let's meet there tomorrow morning. So you've done the hard part. You've led them there. We just gotta create the desired place, destination.
And the other thing we talked about is, is engagement with all the other businesses. And it's one of the things that's like exciting is to, to have downtown contribute to be more fun, more of a place where people are interested in coming. So it's like, we're, we're like really open to, to that. And you guys have the nice, you know, entertainment down here in the summer. But, you know, getting more entertainment, getting more people like, one of the awesome things that we like going to in some of the places that we visit is, you know, you have a saxophone player out on the street or, you know, outside the building playing, you know, the live music. And it's just, it's just fun. People want to be outdoors and be a part of that. And those types of things are, I think, are really interesting to the whole group that we're in. And we're, you know, we haven't talked to you much about that type of stuff, but we presume. I mean, when we're, I was listening to your last meeting, you know, it's about the events that you have and drawing the people and, you know, getting people from the outside to come in, mix with our community.
Any pending legal issues, criminal foreclosure, bankruptcy, or civil?
See, maybe some. Very disappointing, I love this. Every time I hear.
Like if you had one, are you gonna tell us?
Find it.
I should have looked at Emily, you know, when you guys.
I hear the siren now.
Oh, come on, Cliff.
This is, if you're selected by the city to purchase and redevelop the city, the city will be crafting a mutually agreed upon development agreement. Have you worked with a development agreement in the past? And is this an issue for you with this project?
Not with a governing body like a city or township. I mean, only in the sense that you have to always work with any township or city that you're building in, you know, association when you're building a home, if you're buying into an association, things like that. But not like a city of any particular place. I guess you've worked with the city of Oscego.
Yeah, we worked with the city of Oscego on that project.
Well, you know, we've worked with the city of Lowell on the storage unit and getting approval on that township.
Township.
Township of Lowell.
My own county worked with them. You know, we, I mean, on my side, side of business, we're in development. So we, we work with cities and townships.
We know there's rules we're gonna have to follow where we go into.
And what?
And planning, yes, obviously.
Very familiar with the process and have done it plenty of times. And completely like, you know, pulled it to implement. You know, obviously, we wanted to be a positive working relationship with the city, you know. And we want you guys to be just, just as proud as we are of the project, so.
The city of Lowell is a public body. And in dealing with the public body, transparency is the most concerned. There is some strong possibility that the process moving forward will be highly scrutinized by the public. Is this a concern for your firm? And how do you plan to address this as we move forward?
We're used to that.
Well, okay. Is there another way?
You live in Lowell, you see.
Yeah, I realize, talking to many people alone, like, oh my goodness. Yeah, no.
You decide to play football in Lowell, it starts pretty much.
Yeah, I realize, talking to people, oh my goodness, you think I know if your kid's starting next week? I don't even know if my kid's starting next week. I don't know if your kid's starting. No, but honestly, in any business relationship, even in the confidential nature that I operate in, when I'm working with my clients as a CPA, I'm totally transparent with that client. I've obviously got privacy disclosures and things like that intact with my business. But at the same time, if we're working with someone on developing thing, the worst thing that you can do is hide something. I mean, that doesn't work out long-term. No matter who you are, or what you're building, or what you're doing, it's gonna eventually, it's just like a kid being caught in a lie. Eventually, eventually, the truth comes out. So why not just let's all put everything out there in front of you? And I would ask for the same return from any group that I'm working with. And I tell that to all my clients. I'm like, I'm more than happy to be transparent with you. But if you hide something from me, like you've got an impending jail thing or something around the corner. Higher risk, whether they get tucked away. Yeah, Cliff, what are we talking about?
I'm not trying to buy the luggage. My career record has nothing to do with it.
Doesn't have to be discussed, doesn't. So honestly, that's the only thing that we ask in return. Just don't hide anything from us either and try and catch each other. Let's all just work together and try and build something special. Thank you. Of course, you're welcome.
And this question is, do you have any questions for us?
One of my main questions is, does the city have an issue with the building being torn down? Or did you foresee the project as something that is only being added on to? And you feel pretty protective of that?
I would personally think that's what any developer chooses to do with the property. Whether you tear it down, go through the process with Eagle, which more likely you'll have to leave the structure up and work around the existing. That's, in my opinion, that's up to each developer. That's, you know, that's your dollars. That's not our dollars to spend.
Okay, that's good to know.
All the way through the first round of this until now, I've always thought, as long as it's beneficial to the community and it fits in the downtown, I couldn't care less what, how do you get there?
Okay.
It's not my job to tell you how to get there in that respect, I guess. Just to make sure that it fits with what we're doing and what we've been trying to do for the better part of a decade.
I have no emotional or mental time to that cinder block building.
Do any of you see something that we're not hitting on? Like something else that could be introduced into this overall plan? Do you know the desire that the town, the city of Lowell has been coming to? With, it's like, man, it would be great to have.
Do you have any desire to build an Aldi's?
No.
I can't help it.
Outside of Aldi's, you know, something else that maybe we could.
I often hear complaints about the hours of which business operates. We have a lot of like dinners, right? Or, or closed Mondays, or if it's open at dinnertime, it's closed in the morning. So to hear extended hours where it could be morning and afternoon and evening thing, it's something that I think would satisfy a lot of people's needs.
That's great to know that you're hearing that too. Because we, as customers, have ran into those frustrations. And that's something that we were trying to hit on, like, gosh darn it, it's Monday again. They're closed, you know.
And kind of to the point where you're like, is there a fundamental issue? You know, that's just kind of on our mind, like, what have we not figured out?
Like if we're open, are we like?
Because we're like, if we're selling coffee, why wouldn't we be open on Monday? Especially before business starts.
Well, we're also like coffee, like caffeine freaks, yeah. And that's a good way to put it, so.
I think there's so few that are open on a Monday. And if you, you know, for, especially me, when we try to flip on a Monday, it's, it's, it probably is gonna cost me money at the end of the day. It's a time I fire everything out and run the lights and AC and.
Gotcha.
We just don't have, I would like to think eventually with the new restaurants and everything coming in, I would like to think as a business owner, not as a city council person, but we do see an increase in Mondays will be looked at. And we're looking to expand hours for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, just to accommodate.
We're interested in also critical mass, think just the ideas, you know, that help push people with, you know, Edge, you know, all the other things that we do in the other, you know, businesses.
We're like, we can't play on ours, right?
That's always the thing we're looking at. How do we, you know, how do we, how do we get there? You know, with the business plan too, you know, every business plan is different. And, you know, that affects your hours, like, you know, the, you know, the overhead to run a coffee shop and place to grab a drink. And, and that kind of business is probably a lot different than opening a whole restaurant too. So, you know, your costs are probably a lot more in check with being able to, you know, be open and extend those hours to her point.
Any concern or experience with a late-night spot or an early-morning spot with living quarters above it? Like, is it hard to maintain a tenant? Or, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Is it a spot that's gonna be hard to constantly have residential if they're open till 2:00 AM?
I've talked with different construction designers. I wondered the same thing, just from like, even, even this hotel's having that downtown downstairs area where people go out to breakfast and stuff. And people are staying in their hotel rooms. And, you know, thankfully, you know, the tech, technology, just in, just like everything in building has, has advanced. And there's certain things that, you know, the way that we construct the building to make more soundproof barriers, to make sure the tenants upstairs are, are taken care of, will definitely be in place, like 100%. And I quite honestly want to offer the amenities, you know, to the tenants upstairs in a way where, you know, maybe, I, I used to go to this place when I, when I lived in Ithaca, New York, when I was going to Cornell. And you go downstairs where the tenants upstairs could order like coffee to be delivered to their room upstairs. So we, those kind of ideas, we want to wrap in and make sure, you know, the tenants are happy. You gotta have that for tenants, so.
I know we're asking more than just questions, but how, you, you said you're envisioning a coffee place in the morning and a wine kind of thing. How late anticipate? I mean, you think in like 9:00 o'clock? Or, I mean, you're not talking about 2:00 in the morning.
No, not 2:00 in the morning. Not 2:00 in the morning at all, but not 9:00 AM necessarily either.
No, no, I meant 9:00 PM.
Sorry.
Well, that's what I.
I'm assuming a coffee shop, you're gonna open.
Yeah, I'm not even, we're off here at this.
We just had.
Yeah, but we weren't thinking 9:00 PM because I'm thinking about the person that might come down and want to still visit after they've had dinner at Flat River. So I don't, in my head, I'm thinking 11-ish or maybe.
Think of this awesome open container in Lowell too, here, which is pretty unique. So I think that could play well where people, you know, they grab something to, they can, they can walk. But like the whole walking with, and being able to walk around and enjoy each other while they have leverage and meet up in different places is super cool. I mean, that's a super neat, that's a pretty unique thing. I mean, Savannah, Georgia has it, you know, where people are there. And we, we take full advantage of it. So like, I think we want to, you know, contribute, that's a big thing to contribute to, but not till, you know, till 2:00 AM.
No, not till 2:00 AM, soon.
We just had one of those experiences, just something had a bachelor party this last weekend. There's not a lot good going on.
After midnight, man. I don't really agree that it's still a night, so.
Will the city, when you talk about a contract that whoever you select is signing and then working with the city on the construction and overall plan, will they continue to, or all of you continue to meet and give input about topics that we're currently discussing? That's one of the questions that I. That's one of the questions that I have, like, do you foresee a problem if we try, you know, staying open till midnight and adjust from there? Or is that not what you just sign in the contract that we're doing what we agreed to do and then that's it?
The, the agreement is only about getting things done there. I don't think any of us want to concern ourselves with anybody's hours.
Now, you'd have to check with city ordinances and noise ordinances and find out what...
Other than that...
...the tactic, staying compliance with.
Okay.
And on the subject of hours, I'm not the rep to the... Nothing would make Liz Baker happier than if everybody on Main Street said, I'm going to be open seven days a week from X to X, or even six, because we've had the discussion eight million times. But when you have twenty different people, I, my, you guys know me and Julie. We're not going to be there seven days, sorry. We did six for about fifteen years and we're trying to... And the only reason I bring that up is that's why you don't see standardized hours around here. I played with my hours multiple times to, you know...
And it makes sense.
Well, yeah.
Different businesses...
The return on investment isn't worth being here.
Right.
Right.
I, I look at some of these people that are open till eight and nine and God bless them. I used to be open till eight and I sat in there twiddling my thumbs. But every business is different.
Right.
And we, we won't be concerned about your hours.
Well, hopefully you close off and then come down and have a drink, you Julie.
So the last question we have for you is parking. We have five hundred and...
Forty-three.
Yes. And, we might close, but yeah. Uh, but over on that side of the river, we are very limited to what we have. And do you have a plan to try to find accommodating parking? Or have you something of that nature over there?
I know, but I, I knew, you know, in the first round, that was going to be, that was obviously a big concern. Um, and, you know, the business model, we kind of try to set up that people can come and congregate to, you know, a certain level. It's not like the square footage print of that building is, is 10,000 square feet, right? So I think, you know, it has a certain capacity that allows the flow of traffic to work probably pretty well with, with the parking that's provided. Um, but yeah, absolutely, I mean, if we were chosen, we definitely want to, you know, dive into work and make sure the traffic flow and everything, you know, is sustainable work well.
We're going to try and put them on the pass if they're feet walking, if my mother permits.
Wait a second. All right. All right, exit, all set? All right, well, thank you guys.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate the opportunity.
So want to take a break, or you want to start right now? All right, we'll take it.
The camera wasn't off for that, just so you know.